A few of them did and some of them didn't. So like I had to go, except for Yolanda because I had to go.
Okay, let me open up by opening up the Board of Works meeting for September the fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Fettig, a roll call?
All right, we got Board Member Tommy Roulette absent, we got Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone himself.
Here, here. Okay, I have no announcements for this meeting, Brett.
Nothing, sir.
Now entertain a motion to approve minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. The only business I got tonight for this meeting is an internal, I was looking, Jenny's looking for permission to post an internal parks bid, and let me explain that. Parks Department is in need of an additional employee that we're not going to backfill, we're going to take a, hopefully a laborer is going to sign it, and we're not going to backfill the laborer's spot. In fact, Brad said that that will give him an even number of people then to work in twos, so. I just need to give Jenny the authority to post that parks bid.
Goodbye, Mayor.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. I have no other business for the Board of Works, Brett. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next meeting, like called orders, Parks and Recreation Committee for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, roll call, Mr. Fettig.
All right, we got Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Tommy Roulette absent, Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here. Okay, I have no announcement for Parks unless any of you all do. If not.
I'd like to say, you say them's on order for the grills up there, how come they don't take where they're rusted, they're just in the middle, because it's all falling down on the ground right there, won't they just load a plate over that for now?
Well, we're ordering new ones.
Yeah, but I mean, now they're using them now, and it stuff's going everywhere.
We're going to.
They could put something over that, I mean, it's pretty sturdy, you would think they could just.
You're retired, aren't you?
I can do that.
Are you a welder?
I can do that.
Jim, you need welding done at your house?
I'm a jack-of-all-trades, a master of none.
I can say something to Brad, but I, they should be, they should be in. Just imagine, they ordered.
I got there the other day.
They ordered them three weeks ago.
I'm going to have to check that group out first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other announce? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have no business for Parks and Recreation tonight unless anyone has anything to add. Besides Lenny. If not, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next meeting, I like called orders, Utility Board meeting to approve claims and get payroll paid tonight. If I could get a motion to, or a roll call first, Mr. Fettig.
Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tommy Roulette absent, Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
Myself.
All right, I just would need a motion to review and discuss the claims for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Like called order, a city council meeting for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, if everyone could rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One more time, Mr. Fettig.
Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Councilperson Tommy Roulette absent, Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Mondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Wilton.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
Himself.
Okay, announcements, board reports, streets, alleys, and curbs downtown, Mr. Abbott.
It's still being worked on. Do you have any idea when they're going to start the repaving?
Repaving or the, the?
Yeah, the repaving, you know, they fixed all the water lines, all the sewer lines.
You mean patching.
Patching, well, not patching, aren't they going to repave the whole thing once it's all done?
Yeah, but they got to patch it first.
Yeah.
And they're going to patch it and then repave it.
Okay, do you have any idea when they're going to start the repaving?
They'll repave, I know they're going to be patching within the next two weeks according to Austin.
Okay.
And then it'll be after that, and they're supposed to be doing those speed tables.
All right.
So, that's what, that's the report he gave me last week anyway. All right, what about up on the hill then, Mr. Fryman?
Okay, sir, thank you.
Uh, Finance Department, Mr. Bondurant.
I've got nothing, Mayor.
Parks and Playgrounds, Mr. Little.
No report.
Fire Department, I think Johnny put a report in our packet or our email. Uh, one thing I'd like to invite you guys, this Saturday is Fall Music Fest, it's Friday and Saturday, Saturday night, I'd like to uh, recognize you guys up on stage if you're available, if you're on, about eight fifteen, shouldn't take very long if I got some good entertainment, but got the car show on Saturday during the day. Uh, Friday, everything starts around five o'clock, Saturday, car show obviously is at ten o'clock in the morning, I believe it starts, and then we've got things starting that afternoon at two o'clock, but if you guys are available about eight fifteen, uh, be up near the stage and we'd like to bring you up.
What time is the parade for school?
Friday?
Oh, Friday?
Uh huh.
I, I don't even, I think it's six o'clock.
Yeah.
Five thirty or six, I think.
A thirty-six o'clock?
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we're not in charge of that, but.
I think it's five thirty because they moved the game back a little bit as well, I got a notification about it earlier.
I think they're, I think they're lining up at five thirty.
Yeah.
But I think they start at six. I thought I saw a flyer today, maybe, maybe I missed, saw maybe. But yeah, they moved the game back to seven thirty, right?
Yeah.
I was just saying, because it's going to be pretty busy on Friday and Saturday.
Be packed, it'll be good. And I think it should be a good football game, right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, I think here's a typo, it should have been September second, not September ninth.
So moved.
Meeting minutes, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, new business, I'd like to read a proclamation I was asked to to read by the Adult Education Literacy Group of, uh, around, for Dearborn County. Actually, it's September fourteenth through September twentieth, it's Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Uh, whereas Indiana's free adult education programs are critical in building a mere or more informed, literate, and economically resilient citizenry, addressing both social and economic disparities across the state, and whereas an estimated four hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and one working age Hoosiers lack a high school diploma or equivalency credential, and over two hundred thousand have limited English proficiency, making adult education services essential to meeting workforce needs and empowering communities, and whereas Indiana's fifty adult education programs provide free classes to help adults earn a high school equivalency diploma, HSE, obtain industry-recognized certifications, learn English, and prepare for post-secondary education or direct career entry, and whereas in two, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four program year, Indiana adult education programs served over twenty-five thousand adult learners, with outcomes including forty, four thousand two hundred and one HSE diplomas, over twenty-eight hundred career certifications awarded, seventy-two point three percent of students making measurable educational progress, and whereas the Indiana adult education demonstrates a high return on investment generating seventy-four, seventy-four point six million in economic impact from a six point, sixteen point nine million state investment with an average return of five thousand dollars per participant, and an increase in annual earnings of eighty-nine hundred dollars for those attaining a high school credential. And whereas adult education helps meet the growing demand for skilled workers in Indiana's key sectors, including healthcare, logistics, manufacturing, and skilled trades, by integrating education and workforce training to boost employability and wage growth, and whereas Adult Education and Family Literacy Week celebrates perseverance of adult learners, the dedication of educators and volunteers, and the power of education to change lives and strengthen our state. Now therefore, I, Kelly Malone, Mayor of the City of Lawrenceburg, do hereby proclaim September fourteenth through September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, as Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and encourage all citizens to support and promote adult education programs, and encourage family, friends, and neighbors to take advantage of these transformative opportunities, and to witness there, where I here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lawrenceburg to be affixed to this proclamation. I want to add to that, a few years back, uh, we, I worked with Chancellor Graver down here at Ivy Tech, and council at the time graciously, and still do today, this council does it as well, but we contribute a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to uh, adult, uh, education programs at Ivy Tech, and they matched that hundred and twenty-five to help those that are in that gap that maybe couldn't get, they can't get, uh, financial aid, uh, but then they also can't afford it, and so what that does is helps, uh, our, our adults around the area be able to maybe attain a little bit, uh, a little bit better economical, uh, you know, socioeconomic state for their family, uh, so it's proven to be very helpful around the area, so. It, we, I know this council supports that every year as well in our budget, and, uh, they'll be once again looking at that this year uh, when we have our budget work session this, this Wednesday. So, just wanted to make sure that that was read for them and, and we'll get it to the proper people. Okay. Next, I got James Kalenda, uh, you want to come to the podium, we don't have anything, I was telling them before, we, I don't really have, John Johnson isn't here, he's one that told them to be here, uh, I will follow that up with John Johnson myself tomorrow morning, but, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, we're in front of you tonight in hopes that the Tanner Creek project can move forward with the cut fill permit. Um, I was under the instruction that John Johnson got it moved forward for tonight. He advised me that, he spoke with Dell, because I was very interested in see if we can move this forward a little bit faster. You know, I brought Eric Lang, James Cudell, he's representative owner, um, hopefully, we can get some kind of where we're going to go with the cut fill permit, um, so typically, that's what, that's what we're trying to do tonight.
Is that for the, help me, educate me here, is, this is for to, to build the pond?
Yes.
And how?
Or to close the pond.
Okay, I think, I think it would be helpful if, if maybe we, we, we had a, a meeting offline as far as with this group, maybe a work session, uh, to talk about that, because I think there's a lot of questions, uh, but I, I'll be, I'm going to, I'll get with John tomorrow, but I don't know.
I thought, I asked John, because it was very early when Dell spoke, he had to get all the paperwork in order, and we, we added the paperwork, everything that's requested, and then John put James' EAG on the agenda for tonight, and we were hoping that this cut fill permit can get approved, but if that's the case, that we're not going to get anything tonight, maybe, you know, maybe you want to have an in-house with his, you know, because the project is almost.
We just need to express how critical, get an answer from the city one way or the other, we have geosynthetic liner that's exposed up there that we need to get covered with, uh, geo-composite and then cover soil, so, you know, it's a benefit to the city to get that ash pond covered up and closed, so, you know, we'd like to move forward with that.
Right.
Ideally, with the borrowed soil from our own site, but one way or the other, you know, we're at a critical junction here, and we need to know from the city if it's going to be approved or not, if not, then we have to make other arrangements to kind of get that moving, so. We've gotten approval from IDEM to use the borrowed area, that letter's been submitted to the city, all the comments that IDEM sent to us two months ago have been addressed, and that letter is what, you know, John and Dell had said they needed to move things along. That letter's been provided, so, you know, we're, we're at the point now where we just need to know where, where we stand.
Well, and, and I, I, I appreciate what you guys are saying, I really do, uh, really, uh, John should be addressing this group up here with what he, he found out, and I, I don't know that anybody else, if any of you talked with John about this project?
I've talked to John, but I have concerns about the depth, you know.
Mayor, if you don't mind, John Johnson stated to me, I was like, have you talked to Dell? Dell requested this meeting.
Right.
He let me speak last time, thank you, um, the correct paperwork, that's why we got tabled last time, I was like, did you actually talk to Dell about this? Are we good to go? And John said, you're good to go. Dell said, come in. So, you know, everybody's flying in, everybody's doing this, you know, Eric Lang's here to talk about permit issues and any questions that the council may have tonight, somehow to try to move forward, um.
I mean, I.
I was only.
On a net with our, um, third-party environmental group, and I think we have a lot of concerns, we have a lot of questions that aren't answered yet. Essentially what these folks are here to ask for you to vote to approve is to build a twenty-five acre pond over on the former Tanner Creek property that could, could essentially render that property unusable, is right above the aquifer, that would have, um, the potential to affect water downstream throughout Lawrenceburg and Aurora, um, there's no one here in your group from AEP, AP is the legal environmental representative for this cleanup, um, there are some things that are missing, uh, in your permitting, and in fact, we had a, we had an environmental issue today, we got a call
I understand.
From your team on the ground.
I dealt with it.
There was a fly ash cloud that was present throughout the caves, throughout Route.
I understand.
Which happens a lot, so I mean, this group is responsible for making sure that the air and the water and the ground in the city of Lawrenceburg is safe.
I understand.
We have had a lot of incidents with loose fly ash clouds, with leaking dams, your, um, with your mesh going down the river, and until we can get more answers, I don't know that we're in a position to vote on this permit.
I would like to at least tell you about that, I understand Dell, that was happening today, and we did immediately, when that happened, I shut the job down completely. Uh, tried to handle it the best we could, but yeah, I understand.
I think one of the things, James, we'd be interested in seeing when you come back, when we have you back, would be an alternate design that would be a no-fill design. It's our understanding that a no-fill, uh, or a no-fill cap is possible with a, I'll call it astroturf, I mean, that's a unsophisticated way of looking at it, um, or, and/or a plan that includes fill from off-site, I think the
All right.
The pond, the proposed pond raises a ton of follow-up questions and follow-up concerns, where obviously, like the mayor said, we do want these filled, we want you guys to be successful, um, but, you know, when ELT bought this property and they came to Lawrenceburg, they had a meeting at the event center, and they said, this is going to be great for Lawrenceburg, the owner of ELT came down, this is going to be great for Lawrenceburg, economic development, we're going to take that site, we're going to rem, remediate it, we're going to make it something great. And now that we're getting to the end of it, when you say we're going to build a twenty-five acre pond that's ten feet away from our aquifer in Skip Town, when just this many fly ash clouds flying over businesses and Route fifty.
Oh, yeah.
It's hard to swallow that.
I'm local, so I understand, as soon as I found out about it, you know, me and Eric are local, um, you know, there's, I know everybody here, um, so, I dealt with it, but I have nothing else to say, but tried to deal with it, but it did happen, so, I guess the, where the next place where we stand at is, is if, if this situation can't be handled within like the next month or before November first, we, it may sound like we want to look for an alternative because the project's going to get shut down with the liner, not, is going to be outdated. If you think council, it may take a while, you know, maybe a month or, or two months, that's really going to put us dead in the water, and we're, we're going to have to look for other means and method, or if, I'm just trying to guess what we need to do, because there's so many people.
We have tonight, is it that we can either vote it down?
We can table it.
Well, so, my question is, and I'll tell you just quite frankly, I'm worried about the ponding area.
Okay.
That probably most of my council colleagues probably feel the same sentiment. The ponding basically renders that land useless in the future in a lot of ways, um, plus, like Dell said, it's right on top of the aquifers, all of those different things, so. Uh, I'm, I'm more curious, what are, what are the options? If we say no to you guys using the land that's there, are you guys going to then maneuver to find off-site land to then cap it and do that process, or?
Well, we're, yeah, yeah, we're going to have no choice, the.
I mean, if, if we get a no from council that we can't use our property, provide a cover, so we're going to have to come up with another option, which is going to be purchasing fill from an off-site location, and the one thing, you know, that you all should consider is that if we do that, there's going to be a significant increase in truck traffic on Route fifty, because we're going to be hauling in, you know, a couple hundred thousand yards of fill.
I, I don't think that's as big of a concern as what we're concerned about the future.
Yeah.
Okay, because we got a twenty-five acre lake over there, let's say it's ten foot above the aquifer. Anything gets down to that aquifer, you, you may not care about it, but we do.
I respectfully, I personally do care, I take a great deal of pride in the job that I have to do over there, so.
Well, that's something, that's why I think it would be great if we could have a, a separate meeting to discuss, I'd like to know what the end game is, because I've been dealing with this, I, you know, we were supposed to have the fourth port in hand over there, and it got canned because ground wasn't being remedied fast enough, and, uh, you know, I, I got, I have some questions, I mean.
Um, Mayor, if we, if we wait, I, I, I think if we wait much longer, the consequences on the line, it's already down, the horse, the buggy got in front of the horse, we should have had the cut fill permit, I mean, I get it, but the liner's down, and if the liner get exposed, I mean, we're done. If you think this is going to be something that we can resolve in one month, or, or maybe give us a little taste of what could, of hope, you know, if, if we're going to, if we're going to say no or table it and go on for a couple of months, I think.
We need to know that.
I think we're going to be in trouble, yeah, we're, the end game is, is over, um, because of the liners down, because of
Right.
We didn't have the cut fill permit, and.
Well, I understand that, I think that the concern is, is Dylan alluded to is, uh, is the pond.
I, I mean, are, do you think that we're going to get a no, because is, is there any?
No, it's not so much that, but if you guys have questions, is there a way we could expedite, could, do you guys want to provide formal questions to us in writing, and we can respond and then have a meeting, I mean, I don't want to discount any questions you guys have, and if, you know, we're willing to address them, I just would like to move things along, because I've kind of, we've kind of been spinning our wheels here for the last couple of months, trying to figure out, you know, and we brought this up before about, you know, we've offered to come in for a meeting, sit down, go through everything, but it's kind of falling on deaf ears, so.
We've got an internal process that we're, that we have to follow to even be able to educate our council, to put them in a position to make a vote. So we've got some internal work we have to do with our experts, they'll have questions for you before we can even get these guys up to speed to put them in a position to vote, and I don't know how long that'll take, you know, the, I had a meeting today with our experts, and it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to process.
I understand, though, I appreciate your answering that, because we just need to figure out what the next step is, and any way you go, it's going to be not good for us.
Well, more so, we need to know the decision, be it good or bad.
I mean.
So.
It sounds like they've already said it, but, you know, thank you for allowing us to at least speak this time, um. Really, that's about, I mean, Eric, if you want to add anything.
I think there's just a lot of concern with the public.
Yeah.
A lot of the citizens here in Lawrenceburg, they kind of know about the situation, and I think they're very, very concerned, and, and I think they express it to every one of these guys, and it just, uh.
Oh, we're local, you know, me and Eric's local, I, I, I understand, um, we're just trying to push things forward to get this nasty site cleaned up, I mean, it's, it needs to be covered, and.
Sooner the better.
Yeah, because now we're going to be moving into next year, uh, you know, it's just ain't going to get done, so, uh.
I don't know if you have anything, Eric.
The only thing, and James and I have talked about this, and I, and I'm a little hesitant to say John told me this, because we're here and there's confusion, but.
Well, he's not, John's doing what he's supposed to do, so let's stop throwing John under the bus.
Yeah, I'm not throwing John under the bus.
I want to make sure.
John under the bus, because John should be here at the meeting if he's invited people to the meeting.
Yes, sir.
And I'll, I'll take care of that.
So, but, from what I understand, with the permitting that was done for the landfill, and the IDEM approval for the closure plan of the landfill, if we had dirt that was available for an IDEM-approved site that came from wherever in Lawrenceburg, we would not be here at another meeting, we would not be going through another review, and fill would be going down, and that landfill would be, being closed.
I think that's accurate.
Because I don't, because my understanding is, is there's not another hurdle with the city of any review or any other comment period related to closure of the landfill, the only reason we're here is to talk about gaining fill from the pond on site.
I think that's my understanding.
So, so if that's off the table, which is my gut feeling with where this is right now and where this is going, if we could flip a switch tonight hypothetically, and have basically just a, a site approved to get fill from, whether you were building a dirt mound from it or using it for landfill, we're not coming back to ask for anything, we're filling the landfill.
I think that's accurate.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Because if that happens, and we go through the normal channels, you guys won't see a normal grading, cut, and fill permit request, this board will not, because it's not going to result in a hole that doesn't drain, if we just do a normal grading, cut, and fill permit application up on Priville Road per se, or somewhere else, as long as it's just a naturally draining site when we're done, that's an internal staff review only, we go through our IDEM Rule Five, SWP Three, all that crazy stuff, once those things are satisfied, the dirt's flying, and we're not coming back to, to get any secondary or other approval, obviously, your, your staff will be monitoring or whatever like normal, but there's no other, oh, we need a meeting and get on this agenda, there's none of that left to do, if we take that approach.
Issues.
Yeah, that's what I was understood to.
Just making sure that I'm understanding, and there's no misunderstanding between us and John or whoever.
Now, if the ponds, the issue are.
What about that stuff, it's over there where the coal mine used to be, where you had the coal, all that fly ash and stuff in there, what are you going to do with that? Yeah, doing, it's going into the pond, right?
They're caping it.
Caped right now.
Right there, I thought you was talking about the other pond going down.
Talking about the pond, the Gipco.
That's cap, good.
Yeah, that's Gipco, uh, we're right behind Frish's, the location behind Frish's, that's the one, yeah, I know what you're, it's Gipco.
And it sounds like you're saying the same thing, but these guys just want what's best for that site.
Oh, I understand.
Now and in the future, so.
Now, if we came back and said we were going to replace the fill we removed, and the pond would be filled in, is that, does that alleviate the issues from council?
I don't think so, I mean, I think we, our concerns are always going to be the same, if you're digging over that aquifer, the, the, the concerns, the information that we need to have to even make a decision will be. The, the, the concerns, the information that we need to have to even make a decision will be the same and it's significant. As you can understand, as you would, you would want the same thing if you're sitting over here.
If it's so contaminated, how come you guys just don't take it out of there?
I think there's a lot of it, so that, you know.
Very costly.
Well, yeah.
You create a problem by disturbing it as well, that like, that's, that's another thing, if we got to the point where we're doing the nuts and bolts review of this is. If we had a time machine and could go back and make this ash fill not happen, we'd all do it. The reality of it is it's there and the more you stir it up, the more problems you cause.
Just for clarification, that site is contained by a clay dike and it has a twenty mil liner underneath, so it is self-contained. And there are thirty monitoring wells that are around the perimeter that we monitor twice a year, those reports are public on the IDEM website, so. If anybody would like to see the data we've been submitting to IDEM, you know, it's there. But the, the pond itself is contained, it's lined, there's a clay dike around the perimeter. And we're, we're putting the final piece on with the cap, the geosynthetic cap on top with the cover soil and then it'll be completely encapsulated.
There's a way to do this in a safe way, there, there was a power plant there that was active and operational for decades and decades. And this particular product, fly ash, was not regulated the same way it is now until pretty recent. Until the two thousand, it became the CFR through the EPA, which then. IDEM, which then trickled down to our purview, it's there. This city, this region for, for decades and decades. And we want to just close it in the safest way possible and that's, that's what we're doing.
I don't have anything else, I mean.
So I'll ask for a motion to table it, I think, your honor, so I can provide more information and. We just deal with it that way.
How much time are we going to give them?
Well, I think they kind of got to answer.
Wait, can you give us a second?
Do you want to discuss it before they?
As they're at.
I don't know if they're tabled, but that's close enough to I know already, but.
Well, yeah.
IDEM sent the approval letter that I submitted to the city.
No, no, because I, I would rather them table it, we asked for a table, they give us time.
Decide what you want to do with that.
Mayor, if we can maybe get this tabled and still have a chance to speak with you and council, if you will give us some time and table this and.
Table it for thirty days.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So we'll put it back on the agenda for thirty, two meetings from now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alrighty.
Do we, we still plan on having a meeting prior to that, with just internally?
Well, and our folks here, Cindy is here with Brian, our expert that she's brought in. And you'll, he's, he's very, is incredibly well-versed in this exact kind of project.
Good, yeah, I'd like to get everybody in a room, I think that would be beneficial everywhere.
And then will they be invited to attend that meeting as well or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Dell, may we have all questions that, concerns that the council has and maybe we have the opportunity to answer. Because I know the questions that she's going to, you're going to let Cindy review or let her review them, can we have a set of questions, so. James can take back and we can review them, be prepared for the next thirty days? That, do you have any questions?
I was going to say.
No, I meant, is there, can we get the opportunity to answer some of your questions?
Meeting would be is that we'd be in front of them to answer their questions?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Learning a lot.
Yeah.
And then we're, we're going to have questions bounce off.
Oh, I understand, okay.
As you guys explain things, it might spur some questions as well, I, you know, I, I don't know, but it could.
Well, thank you for the.
The only thing that I would ask is, I'm not going to be available for the next couple of weeks, so if we could do the in-person meeting after October seventh.
Yeah, yeah, that should be okay.
Okay.
Seventh?
Yeah, I don't get back, I'm going to be out of the country for a couple of weeks, so I get back on the October seventh.
You gotta stay here.
I knew that was coming.
We're going to do it October fourth.
Yeah.
Is that still, with that timeframe, does that still protect the liner that you guys have there right now or?
I'd have questions about the liner.
Yeah.
Alright, I.
I just.
I mean, as, the longer we put that liner exposed, obviously we open ourselves up to more issues.
The liner's been there for ten years, some of it. That's just one.
So that's, respectfully, that liner hasn't been on site for ten years, that liner was ordered in twenty eighteen. It was in the shed on the power plant side covered for the last five years while we went through the whole process of getting approval. The concern is we have thirty-five plus acres of liner deployed. The UV issue is not the biggest concern, we're more concerned about. Environmental concerns, weather, winds, animals, you know, damaging the liner, so the, the sooner we would get it covered, the better, so.
You put that liner in without having your permit, so I mean, from your own.
Correct.
From your own words, you put the cart before the horse, so that's not our issue.
Understood, we, we understand that's not your issue.
Question is, throughout the whole Midwest, I mean, this is, this fly ash ponds is a problem everywhere. Has there been anything similar done like this anywhere else?
These projects, I mean, on a geotechnical point of view, yeah, they're, they're.
When we did a smaller.
Fly ash ponds and other.
The landfill at AEP was closed three, four years ago, it was a smaller version of what we're doing right now, it was a fly ash landfill. We didn't have a geosynthetic cap, we had a two-foot clay cap, but yeah, we, we did that.
That's the pond behind.
Last five years, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, is the fly ash contaminated?
Can we hold off on the questions till we get back together? That way we, or else we're, we're going to ask the same questions when we get back together in two weeks.
We did have the liner tested a second time, so it's been sitting out and it was approved, so it's still, and it's stayed sitting there, still approved. It hasn't outdated itself.
Yet.
Yet, but it's, we're still good.
Okay.
To, you know, to answer your question, yeah, I know where you're going with that.
Meeting after October.
Yeah, okay.
It will probably be the following week if they were out, the week.
That's the following week that we're out, aim.
We will, we will get back, we will have it after October seventh. The week in between that is the following week.
Yeah, aim's the twenty-first.
Yeah, we can do it the following.
He gets back to vacation if it's before that.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, thank you, council members, appreciate you letting us speak.
Can I get a motion to table, some of those tables, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled, alright, Mr. Fettie, we got you, utility director salary.
Yeah, this is just ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty-five and all this is, is basically to, you guys approved a contract and the number on the contract, I want it to match what the salary order says.
Let me find it. Seven dash twenty twenty-five?
Yep.
Questions, guys? I entertain a motion to approve ordinance seven, number seven dash twenty twenty-five, as long as it unanimous approve and adopt tonight regarding utility director salary.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, guys. The next one, Mr. Little, I'm requesting to table that, you knew about that?
Yes.
Ordinance establishing criteria for bidder for certain public works projects, can I get a motion to table?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, any other new or old business from this group? Comments from the audience?
I will make one comment, we did rent out the pavilion.
Second comment.
It was very nice.
It was nice.
It went off really great.
Good, I heard it did, yeah, I heard it did, they're just giving you a hard time.
We'll see how many more times we can rent it.
I heard it did go off pretty good.
It didn't, it went off.
And they're still married.
Yep, they're still married.
So that's good.
How much did they rent it for?
Fifteen hundred dollars. Yeah, for an hour. I don't know even what, I don't know what it was. It was the same as.
They got it.
Yeah. Okay, can I entertain a motion to review and approve the claims?
Nope, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You okay, Lynn?
I don't know.
I entertain a motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified, motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And carries.